Members of the audience, closed captioning has been enabled. The dropdown menu for captioning will allow you to pick the language of your choice. Good evening. Welcome to this virtual virtual forum with the candidates for South Kitsap School District Directors, Districts two and five. Tonight's forum is sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Kitsap, which is recording this event for later access. BCAT, Bremerton Kitsap Access Television is also recording tonight. No part of this recording may be used for any purpose without the express written permission of the League of Women Voters of Kitsap. My name is Janet Stegemeier and I will be the moderator for this forum. The League of Women Voters, which celebrated its 100th anniversary in 2020, is proud to be a nonpartisan organization, neither supporting nor opposing candidates and political parties. The public was invited to sending questions through the League's website, and more than 50 questions just for the South Kitsap School District Directors Forum were received. We'll be lucky to get to 10 tonight with this many candidates. Please understand that we will not ask yes or no questions, or what we call loaded questions. If you still have questions after tonight's forum, we encourage you to ask the candidates themselves. Their contact information is in the Kitsap County Voters Pamphlet that you should have received through the mail. And the pamphlet is also available out online at the Kitsap County Auditor's Election website. Candidates for School District two are Mr. Glenn Goddard, Mr. John R. Burke, Mr. Jamie Cross, Ms. Megan Higgins, and Mr. Paul L. Nutrums. Candidates for District five are Mr. Jay Villers, Ms. Rhonda Edwards, and Mr. Larry Mann. All candidates listed in the Voters Pamphlet were invited to this forum, but not everyone could attend. Please note that although candidates must reside in a particular district, voters who live anywhere in the South Kitsap School District may vote for directors for Districts two and five. Candidates, thanks to all of you for stepping up to offer your skills and talents in service to the school district. We ask that during the forum, you maintain civility with one another. During tonight's format, all of you will be given one and a half minutes to make an opening statement. We will go in the order your names appear on the ballot. Then I will begin the questions. In a rotating order, you will have 60 seconds to respond. If you have answered a question and have time remaining, you may speak about a previous question or clarify a statement. If you'd like me to repeat a question, please let me know. At the end of the forum, each candidate will have one and a half minutes to make a closing statement. If you run out of time, you may finish your sentence. Our timekeeper will maintain the countdown electronic clock. So we'll begin with an opening statement, one and a half minutes, Mr. Goddard.
Thank you for hosting this event. My name is Glenn Goddard. I'm running for the District two position for the South Kitsap School Board. I am running because I don't like what where things are going with our school district and with schools across our country. Unfortunately, parents' rights are being eroded. Things are being demonstrated to children that they're probably not age appropriate. We need to, as Megan has put in her voter paper, and I agree with that, we desperately need a new building. And I know John is very well aware of that. We need to raise some funds to get some current buildings and institutions for our kids. You know, we're just, our buildings are in shambles. We need to do better for our kids. And I want to do, I want to do right for the children of the students of this district. And I thank you for the opportunity to talk to you. Thank you.
Mr. Burke? Mr. Burke, you're muted.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, while on the board, I've been leading in drafting policies. I expanded the opportunities for more public comment at the meetings. I've been vigilant in looking out for the rights of the parents and the community in providing transparency for the board's actions. After I was first elected to the South Kitsap School Board in 2019, we were hit with COVID and all of its related challenges and controversies. But more significantly, we had a board member who was so negative and disruptive in the meetings that he became the focus of attention, distracting the board from its job of educating the children in the district. He either voted no or abstained on nearly everything. He constantly complained, but rarely proposed any viable solutions. I am a professional registered parliamentarian, nationally recognized expert in running meetings fairly and efficiently according to Robert's Rules of Order. I attempted to use my skills as such to help bring some order to the board. I then became the brunt of his attacks. Now that he's not running again, I look forward to a more productive term on the board. I support the board's proposed bond coming up on the ballot in November and hope that we can move forward in rebuilding the district and establishing more confidence with the community. John Burke, South Kitsap School Board.
Sorry, Ms. Higgins.
I thought it was me. I just wanted to make sure. I am Megan Higgins and I'm running for the District two. I am running because I started to attend meetings. I attended one that was specifically for the facilities that they were reviewing, the facilities about a year ago. And because as we can agree, the buildings are in disrepair and they are, we need to do better for our kids. And so that's what got me involved because I'm a person where if I see a problem, I like to go and see what's going on and try and say, how can I help? And I want to help the community. I think that there's been a real negative view of our district that we're not supportive of the kids. And I disagree with that. I think that we have been trying to do that in ways that we can. And I think that this bond will really help turn that around. And I know that I am capable of calm and reasonable discussion that we can move forward and make good decisions and help our kids progress and get them buildings that will be capable of the technological advances that have been made and that they need to be able to learn in this environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Villers?
Hi, thank you. I'm running for District five. I'm a passionate educator. I've been in education for 38 years and I have really been on different sides of the schoolhouse. And I am really passionate for kids and for student achievement. Again, like other candidates here have talked about, I've seen and experienced the struggle it is to get resources for our buildings and for our students. I think that I support trying to find, to give our kids the best facilities that they can have. I appreciate the work that our school district has done over the years and trying to maintain our facilities as they're all over about 30 years old. And I think our kids deserve the best that they can with that. I know that our community needs to be more of a partner as we work with our school board. And I think that the, there are so many, so many particular issues out there that I think we need to collaborate with each other to try to make them better in the schoolhouse itself. We have a lot of, there's a lot of legislation out there that has affected the schools from a variety of areas. And I hope that my presence on the school board would be able to make that something that we can look as a meaningful thing and something that seems reasonable. So I'm excited to be on the school board and appreciate your support.
Thank you. And Ms. Edwards?
Hi, thank you for having us tonight. I appreciate that. My name is Rhonda Edwards. I am in the South Kitsap District number five and running for School Board Director. I'm third generation family, born and raised in Port Archer, graduated from South Kitsap. And my parents as well, my three children, and now I have nine grandchildren in various school districts. So I'm very interested in schools. I found that in selling a couple of my businesses, I was able to have some time to devote back to my community. And I'm very passionate about trying to help the district. My biggest goal was being a help in the financial accountability and transparency. Running a business for 36 years, I've gone through up markets, I've gone through down markets. I know the importance of balancing a budget. And right now, our district is in a negative situation. So very little resources left in the rainy day fund, so to speak. And so I really am interested in helping to balance our budget, get us financially healthy again, and be very transparent in our expenses, where our money is going and how it's being spent. I'd like to encourage more parental involvement in our school district. I think the more parents we have, the better it is.
Thank you. Yes, time. All right, to question one, it'll be 60 seconds to respond. Tell us about the South Kitsap School Board meetings you've attended. What do you consider to be the main roles and responsibilities of School Board Directors? And how can the directors be most effective? Mr. Burke? And you're muted.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah. Before I ran for the school board four years ago, I attended nearly every board meeting for two years. So I was familiar with what the board was doing and how it functioned. Of course, things changed after I got on the board because, as I mentioned, the makeup of the board. The function of the board is to provide the leadership and the, the policy and the goals for the district. They then delegate to the superintendent the actual day-to-day running of the district. The way the South Kitsaps School District Board is configured, we're using a governance model where we don't micromanage all of the decisions made in the school district. In other words, we provide the guidance to the superintendent. This is what you must do. This is what you must not do. You function within these parameters. And then the superintendent-
Thank you, thank you.
Reports back, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Higgins?
Yes, I've attended a few meetings. One was the facilities planning meeting and the board members went around and were listening to people as they were discussing on committees. I also was able to attend the meeting about budget cuts, which was a very well-attended meeting. A lot of members of the school district attended and with good reason because the school district is the largest employer of our district in where we live. And so a lot of people are concerned about budgets and our people who we employ. And at that meeting, a lot of parents spoke about the areas that they thought would affect their children. And the board members actually adjusted the budget to reflect the, what the people were saying. And I think that is really what the board's job is to do, is to listen and respond when there's overwhelming people who are saying this is what's important to us and listen and respond to that.
All right, Mr. Villers?
Yeah, I've attended a lot of different board meetings over the years. And especially, and recently, I've been on the Zoom meetings for the board. But as John had said, it's about the governance model that we use in our district and that there is oversight there. And there is the process of working with the superintendent to make sure that, you know, things are, let them, the administration, you know, do the day-to-day and run the school district. But as a, as a board member, you're really representatives of the community to involve your opinion and to collaborate with the district itself. So that, and with all the different voices of the people that are on the board that represent the community, we should be able to come to some consensus of what things that we need to do and what our ideas are. So it can be a great process. It can probably be frustrating at times because there's difference of opinions, but that's the beauty of negotiating and being able to work together. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Edwards?
Yes, so just to let you know, I do not see a clock on my screen. So if I go over, just let me know. I do believe that, you know, our main goal is to represent the parents and the taxpayer and to do the best that we can do for the kids. I would like to see more dollars being spent towards kids. Right now, we're a little top-heavy in administration cost. I think that it is best described as building bridges, building bridges to parents, trying to encourage their attendance to the board meetings. I know I've been attending them for about a year. And I did attend the bond meetings at will. And at one bond meeting, I was the only taxpayer resident there. So I would love to see more encouragement because I don't know that they really had a good idea of what the general public wanted.
Thank you. And let me know if you're, the time, the clock shows up again. But until you tell me that, when you're down to 10 seconds, I'll raise my hand.
Okay, great.
Okay, all right. And then, Mr. Goddard?
I've been listening to the board meetings since the pandemic, but with my wife on Zoom. And recently, this last year, been attending them in person. I agree with everything the rest of the candidates have said about the purpose of the board. And I think that we do need to work harder in getting facilities for our kids and in ensuring that we respect the parents' involvement. There are some policies that we have right now that I think we need to address and that aren't in alignment with parental rights and with the wishes of our taxpayers. Thank you.
All right, on to question two, again, 60 seconds. How would you work to promote academic gains in the South Kitsap Schools? And we'll start with Ms. Higgins.
I think that we start with analyzing our data that we have. We have lots of scores that come in every year because we have state testing, which gives us an idea of how our kids are doing. However, we have to realize that that is not the only measure of a kid's academic worth and what they're capable of doing. Testing can't test everything. But I think that we can do better at creating committees that involve the parents and look into ways in which we can do better for our kids, come up with great ideas. I've heard of ideas for creating reading programs with our parent volunteers that they can come in and come into the classrooms and read with the kids. And I think that we could do a lot more community involvement in South Kitsap. We need you. We need more parents. We need more involvement. I think that we actually beg people to be involved. And I think that we could use more people.
Great, Mr. Villers?
Yeah, so I think that, you know, I would, to improve student achievement and the work that we need to do in academics in our district, we need to, again, look at data that we have. And testing data, though, I think we need to look at what the most authentic data that we can get from testing. Not all testing is equal. And I think that everybody needs to be on board on that, that's actually giving the tests and with the students. So with that, that takes a lot of staff development to get everybody working on the same page. And then you hone in on the goals or the areas that you need to focus on by working together and actually assessing the assessment in a way. Because you want to make sure that what we're assessing is accurate and that it's giving us the information that we need, that it truly is connected with the teaching that we're doing. And so that takes a lot of work and it takes a lot of connection and a lot of work with different people. So thank you.
Ms. Edwards?
Yeah, I am a big believer in testing. I think that's how you measure success. What is disappointing to me is that a lot of times the testing isn't done until the end of the year. And by that time, the year is almost over and it's almost too late to try to catch the student up. So, you know, the third grade reading, I think, is very disappointing that only 38% of the third graders could test at third grade reading level. And I feel that that is just absolutely unacceptable. I think there should be accountability. And we have to ask ourselves, you know, how it's being taught? Is there good curriculum? Is it a teaching problem? Is it a time period that they're giving the teacher to teach the reading? And how can we do testing mid-year, you know, maybe on a trimester basis so that we can help people? And my timer is working, so thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you. Let's see, Mr. Goddard?
Do you repeat the question?
Yes.
I know we've talked a lot about testing, so I just want to make sure I got the question right.
I'm happy to do that. Okay. How would you work to promote academic gains in the South Kitsap Schools?
Okay, uh, well, I think that one of the problems we have is, we talked about before, is facilities. I know that there are some excellent teachers we have in the district. But one of the problems that we currently have is that we have some very good classes, very good teachers. We don't have enough space in these classrooms, some of these classrooms, for the kids to be able to participate in the classes that they need and that they actually want and desire, have interest in. I know, for example, that there were some robotics classes and choir classes that were full and kids weren't able to participate in the John Sedgwick Medical School. So I think facilities is a large hindrance to promoting further education of our kids in our continuation. For example, this past year, we had to postpone testing because it was too hot in classrooms and kids were unable to actually do their testing on time this year.
Thank you. Mr. Burke?
Yes, on testing, I see two purposes for testing. One is to evaluate the overall progress of the students when you're evaluating the curriculum. In other words, is this particular math curriculum that we're using, is it working? How are the students doing in relation to, you know, state averages, national average, whatever? But I think the real purpose of the testing is to study the individual students. And this testing is not done once a year, it's done throughout the year. And the purpose is to identify those students that need help. In other words, which students need help in what areas so you can address those needs? So it's a diagnostic tool in teaching. Most of the education in the schools takes place when there's contact with the students. And most of that is done in the classroom and in other academic areas. The purpose of the entire district is to support those who are in contact with the students and actually teaching them.
All right, question three, again, 60 seconds. Please discuss your views on banning books and curricula from classrooms and school libraries. In some school districts, materials that deal with racism, Black history, LGBTQ, sexual identity, Jewish history and identity, and other challenging topics have been removed. Ms. Higgins?
Hi, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I messed up the order here. It's supposed to be Mr. Villers. So sorry.
Well, I've had some experience with this as Assistant Superintendent. I was in charge of the Curriculum Committee in our district. And the idea behind that process is for the community to be present. I know that Mr. Burke was on that when I was there and that they give insight to that. But we also have to remember that we are a public institution and the laws of the land and how we work with them at the present time is how we involve or work or decide what we can and cannot do. Clearly, community needs to have an input on that because our politics within our whole nation have, you know, are different in different places. But we do have a common thread that is what we actually, what we feel as a public education needs to present to our kids. And so it's a complicated issue, but we do have systems in place. Of course, I am not an advocate of banning books. I want to learn from these things that we're doing. And it oftentimes gives people an opportunity to know more about the world that they're in.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Edwards?
You know, I have seen so many videos of parents and their children coming to board meetings and reading from books that are just totally not age-appropriate and should never be in the school and not be part of any of the curriculum. I'm not for banning books, per se, but I am okay with limiting books so that they're age-appropriate. And, you know, when kids arrive at a board meeting to read from the curriculum that's being taught to them and told that they cannot read that book because it's so sexually explicit, then I think there's something wrong with the school allowing that book to be in the classroom. So it has to be age-appropriate. I don't think a third grader needs to have certain curriculum that sexualizes them. So I think everything has to be age-appropriate. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Goddard?
My wording is virtually identical with Rhonda said. I don't believe in banning books, but I think we have books that are not appropriate for the ages of the children that we have. I can end this early because I do not disagree with anything Rhonda said. She covered my points exactly. I feel the same way.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Burke?
Yes, I believe that history should be taught and not sanitized. In other words, you don't sanitize Mark Twain. You read Mark Twain because that is an example of the attitudes of the time. And people need to understand what the general thought was at the time. I've heard people trying to ban Laura Ingalls Wilder, racist stereotypes regarding the Indians. Well, that was what they were dealing with back then. We do have a curriculum committee to review these things. If someone finds a book that is inappropriate, bring it to our attention. The videos that you see on YouTube, they're not from South Kitsap Schools. And I don't recall anybody, you know, bringing a sexually explicit book to our school board or to our attention. But certainly, we want to be on the lookout to make sure that all of our materials are age-appropriate and not indoctrinating the students.
Ms. Higgins?
Yes, I did some research on how our board handles things like this because I found it appalling that some people can take a poem that was read at a presidential inauguration and say that it made them feel uncomfortable. And so they banned that book. And it was very beautiful. But we do not have that in South Kitsap. We have a committee. And that makes me feel very comfortable when someone finds a book that they want to use in their curriculum. It has to be approved. And this committee is made up of parents and members of the community are involved, as well as people that are staff. And they are also parents usually. And they all need to come to a consensus on how to vote to see if that book should be appropriate or not. And so that's comforting to me that we have it in place and I intend to continue to keep that way.
Thank you. On to question four, again, 60 seconds. Who are the biggest supporters of your candidacy? Who are the biggest supporters of your candidacy? And what are the major sources of funds for your campaign? Please include individuals, groups and organizations and we'll start with Ms. Edwards.
Uh, yeah, so my biggest fans are my clients, past and present. Uh, my coworkers, my family, which is quite extensive since my father came from a family of ten. So I think I had fifty-two cousins living within about a mile of my house as I was growing up. So I have an extensive family, uh, extensive friends, lots of, um, different sports that I've been involved with with my kids. And, um, like I say, being in business for thirty-six years. So as far as funding my campaign, I am self-funding. Um, I have not sought any contributions from anybody, any organizations. I don't want to feel beholden to any particular organization uh, for how I might, um, be a good board director.
Okay, um, let's see, uh, Ms. Edwards, I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. Goddard.
Uh, my supporters are the neighbors and the community members that I've talked with about the how the school system is going. And, uh, they, a lot of people agree with me and I I agree with a lot of people here that are running a candidates. I I do so far, nobody has presented anything I disagree with. And I am also self-funded. I have not raised any funds. And, uh, also currently haven't spent any funds, so, um, that should answer that.
All right, uh, let's see, um, Mr. Berg.
Well, yeah, there are nine hundred eighteen school board positions up for election this coming November. And of the nine hundred eighteen, there are only four where there are four or four, five, five or six candidates running. And I'm one of those. There are there are five people running for my position. So maybe I've done a really good job, maybe I've got a lot of people who want to get rid of me. I'm not sure. Uh, I'm self-funded. I haven't received any donations from anyone for this particular campaign.
Right, uh, Ms. Higgins.
Turn them down.
Uh, Ms. Higgins.
Hi, uh, yeah, I just began receiving, uh, well, I have a lot of support from, um, uh, the elementary school where my kids attend. Um, and I have also had a lot of community members since, um, the uh, voters pamphlet has come out. I have had a lot of people contact me and ask for help. Um, and that has been really comforting that people are supporting me. And I have received some donations from, uh, just community members. I haven't received any donations from any groups. I did receive an endorsement from the Kitsepp County Democratic Women's Group. Um, I don't feel beholden to them. Um, I think it's a way to get my name out there and show that I am a candidate that could do this since I don't think a lot of people have heard my name before. And so I'm contacting lots of groups to try and, uh, get my views heard so they can see if they want to endorse me or not.
Right, uh, Mr. Villers.
Yeah, I've been in this community over twenty-five years, close to thirty, and so the people that are supporting me or uh, the people that I've worked in the community as an educator, so there's a lot of educators that are out there, I think, that have supported supporting me and parents and students that I've worked with. And, um, uh, I currently don't, uh, I I don't have any endorsement, official endorsements from any organizations. I have, uh, received some donations from individuals who are just really are friends of mine that, uh, wanted to support me in this endeavor. So that's, uh, the people that are behind me at this time. So, thank you.
Right. Uh, thank you. And on to question five. Do you support or oppose the twenty-year, two hundred and seventy-one million dollar school bond that will appear on the November ballot? And why? Um, let's see, uh, Ms. Edwards.
I do not support the bond as written. I am very supportive of a future bond that I could be part of the planning. I do not feel that it meets the needs of the public. As I speak to various people, people I work with, customers, family, and they find out that two hundred and seventy-one million dollars does not get us a second high school. They are very disappointed and it's a no-go for them. So I don't think that the bond as written for the projects that they're doing is the best, uh, use of money. I think we should be consolidating some of the elementary schools, adding wings to the schools that have the property and and room for wings. Um, but I do not believe that the Awala Elementary School should be rebuilt. I think that it should be merged with Mullenix Ridge and a new wing bill. Um, and other elementaries, there's four that I feel could be merged very easily, uh, at a much lesser cost.
Right, uh, Mr. Goddard.
Um, I I do support the bond because, uh, for the first time I got a discuri- fronted a little bit. I I I, the biggest problem I've seen in talking with my fellow community members is that the high school request has been on the ballot almost every time, multiple times in a year sometimes. And people are sick of it. The community is fed up of constantly saying no to the high school. And I think the board this time actually did a good thing and changed the scope. Did not pursue the high school. I I, we, I agree, we need the high school, but trying to push it right now is not going to go through the community. It just won't. If we push high school, it will not be accepted. So I think the board did good on their proposal on certain aspects and narrowing down the, uh, the scope of funds that are required.
Right, uh, Mr. Berg.
Uh, yes, I support the, uh, two hundred and seventy-one million dollar twenty-year bond. I think it's important that we act now because with the current inflation, prices are only going up. And also environmental regulations regarding construction are becoming more stringent. If we're going to build, we need to build now. You know, the best time to plant a tree is yesterday, not not tomorrow. Uh, as, uh, Mr. Goddard said, the the voters have repeatedly turned down a second high school. And I think the board heard that and moved forward. I'm concerned about consolidating or expanding elementary schools because there is a, there's an optimist, optimum size for elementary schools. It's important that an elementary school be a community school and closer to the students. So I would, I would not be in favor of, uh, expanding and consolidating or closing any of the elementary schools.
Um, Ms. Higgins.
Uh, I'm in favor of the bond. It did take a little convincing initially at that first facilities meeting that I attended, um, but I found that it was very well researched. This was a committee that they went out, they went to the schools, they looked at them. They assessed every building and its needs and they said, look, we've been ignoring these elementary schools and our middle schools because we've been so focused on the high school. Now that thirty years have passed and we didn't get the high school, it would have been great if we got the high school and then they would have moved on to other buildings, but uh, because they were so focused, all these other schools have been in disrepair and now we really need to clean it up. And, um, I think a lot of students will stay, will fix a lot of our retention. Uh, we've seen a decrease in, um, enrollment and I think it will keep people here. And I think that we really need to concentrate on our vulnerable populations of our young kids. Need to be able to, um, use the bathroom if there has been a lockdown. Uh, there have been so many stories that I've been told that are horrific that we need to remedy.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Villers.
Yeah, I'm in favor of the bond. I think it's a great package that allows for repairs and to rebuild uh, for all parts of our community and all different schools. Uh, we have spent a lot of time and I have worked on that a lot, trying to to get a second high school. And there's some type of fatigue in terms of our voters and and doing that and we can't come to an agreement with that. Um, and so I think that by by putting out this bond, we can get a lot of needed pieces for all over the district that can give these resources. Uh, we're way behind other districts. Uh, I've been working in districts, uh, as an accreditation coach in, uh, Central Kitsepp um, and in Peninsula and they have, uh, those people have stepped up and made repairs and done things that that they have world-class, uh, facilities. And we need world-class facilities for our kids. And if that, this bond can make that happen, I'm all for it. So, thank you.
Right, uh, question six. Some people say they don't trust the school system or teachers and express concern that their parental rights are not being taken into consideration. What would you say to these parents? Uh, Mr. Goddard.
Unfortunately, I would also agree with them at this point in time. Our district currently has a policy that has a database that, uh, kids have their preferred pronouns and how they wish to be addressed that is not allowed to be seen by the parents. It is intentionally kept from the parents. So I agree with people that say that we are tramping, trampling on parental rights.
All right, thank you. Um, Mr. Berg. Mr. Berg.
I was looking, I was looking for a particular quote here, but I don't see it offhand. The the primary responsibility of educating students and children is the parents. Now, this primary duty of the state is also educating the students. But the parents have the first responsibility. I don't believe that the district should be hiding anything from the, uh, students. The only time that they should hide something is if the child would be in danger if the parent knew that. And if that's the case, then there needs to be a referral made to Child Protective Services. Otherwise, this parent should be able to see anything in the school records about their child.
Right, uh, Ms. Higgins.
Um, I am a parent of young kids in the district. Like I said, um, I have an eight-year-old and a six-year-old and a three-year-old. The three-year-old is not in the district yet, but, uh, the amount of support and, uh, I have such great communication with their teachers on a daily basis, um, if I want to. I, the meetings that we're able to have and, um, we, if something is wrong, I can message the teachers on Parent Square, which they've made available. It's so amazing that I can text them and they respond and I have had nothing but good interactions with our teachers. And I also tutored math classes in, uh, Marcus Whitman and the amount of knowledge that that teacher had about those students was incredible. She knew uh, what was going on at home, what their family situation was, how responsive their parents were, because she was contacting them constantly about how to better help her, their kids in there. And I really, I haven't seen, um, that lack of effort for teacher and parent communication. I just haven't, that hasn't been my experience.
Okay, uh, uh, Mr. Villers.
Yeah, I think that, uh, I think what what Megan has talked about is is really key. Communication is the key. And I I've been in many meetings with, uh, parents over the years and teachers and parents together. Um, over issues that they, that that people just didn't understand or didn't know. And I I would encourage the community and if I'm on the school board, I would encourage more community involvement to connect with teachers and and to connect with principals to to try to find those things out. Because if you don't look for that, then you make up something in your head that says that, uh, that may not be true. It's, you feel it because you you feel disenfranchised, but you really need to seek that and have that collaboration with the schools so that, um, things can be cleared and that 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 they know that your uh, rights aren't being being trampled. And if you disagree with it in the end, sometimes there are just the ways of both our laws that we can't, uh, can't change, but we can sure try to make it as best that we can make it. So, thank you.
Uh, Ms. Edwards.
I don't think this is a black and white issue of parents, uh, being kept in the dark by the the school district. On the one hand, you have people who feel that, uh, the school took the position that should they out the child, so to speak, that the child would be in danger. Well, that's a huge leap to think that a parent would be a danger to a student, so therefore we need to keep a secret. So I don't agree with, uh, the school stance on that. What I do believe is that if a child, a student, um, meets with a counselor and there is information exchanged and the student is feeling apprehensive about sharing that information with the parent, then it would be appropriate for the counselor to set up a meeting with the student and the parents and maybe guide them through that disclosure. Um, and of course, if there were any fallout from that, you know, our job then would be to report it to CPS.
Okay, uh, question seven. What are your thoughts on diversity, equity and inclusion policies in the public schools? Mr. Berg. And you're muted, Mr. Berg.
Okay, yeah, uh, diversity, equity and inclusion can mean a number of different things to different people. Equity, the way it's outlined in the district policy is equity of opportunity, not equity of outcome. Some people are arguing that everybody should have an equal sick level of success. And that's not the district policy. The district policy is equity of opportunity. As far as diversity, uh, we need exposure to all, you know, ideas and cultures, but that doesn't mean that we need to force, uh, acceptance. If if I, if I choose not to drink, I don't have to go to bars because I don't want to associate with those people. You know.
All right.
Inclusion is simply being fair to everybody.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Higgins.
Um, yes, I think that, uh, we could do better in those areas all the time. I think diversity, inclusion and equity are very important because this is a very diverse world that we live in and in community. And if these kids ever travel anywhere else, they're going to find it's even more diverse. And, uh, we really need to learn how to work and live together. And the school is the first place that these kids come across people who are different from them. And the the education that they learn, how to deal with that and how we can learn to understand that just because someone is different from you, that doesn't mean that it's wrong. It means that everybody has different interests and different backgrounds and how we can, um, support them. And equity is huge. Our kids are showing up with very different backgrounds. Some are showing up hungry and I think that those need to be addressed so that they can actually learn. Um, you can't learn on a hungry stomach and, um, that's not an even playing ground. The schools could do, we we need to help those kids to make sure that there's equal playing ground for those kids.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Villers.
Yeah, I'm very passionate about diversity and equity and inclusion. Um, I think that, uh, that's how we, we, I agree with Ms. Higgins, Ms. Higgins on the on the fact, that's how we learn, that's how we teach one another and we get better as a world and better as a community by understanding diversity with each other. Uh, equity is just imperative if we're going to have student success or our student achievement scores are going to go higher because we have to have everybody on the same playing field and that has to, has to be there. So equity is, i- i- like Mr. Berg talked about, you know, uh, providing opportunity and and an even balance. And of course, inclusion is is really the way that we can collaborate together and that we can understand one another. So I am, uh, very passionate about those things and as an educator for thirty-eight years, I have really pushed, um, every one of those issues as we've moved forward in our society and in our schools. So, thank you.
Hey, uh, Ms. Edwards.
You know, um, I am not as well-versed on this subject as what I will be. Um, I listened to a congressional hearing where the lead, the the head director of D DEI, um, was on there to talk. And as she described DEI, I could see some of it as being And as she described DEI, I could see some of it as being good. But some of it is not being so good. Um, the equity that she explained. Is when they look at hiring or making decisions of, uh, including a group, they try to choose the best of several groups. So, it's not merit-based. And so I have some concerns about that. I continue to speak to family, friends, people that are supportive of my endeavorment here. And I have not made a final decision. It's, it is open. I need to find out more about it. Uh, what the curriculum looks like before I make a decision.
Hey, uh, Mr. Goddard.
Uh, I'm gonna hurt myself a little bit and say that I agree with Dawn on the, uh. Terms of equity, I, I think a lot of people do misinterpret that. It, I agree absolutely with, uh. Equal opportunity, equal outcome is what some individuals are pushing for. And that does not do anyone any good. Uh, for diversity, I absolutely agree that having differing viewpoints, different backgrounds increases. Everyone's opportunities, their knowledge and their abilities to. Deal with different circumstances. The issue I have with the most is inclusion. From personal experience, we have a problem with inclusion in our district. And a lot of people may not be aware of this. My, my son, my oldest is in, is wheelchair-bound. And we have fought at every school in order to just get him simple access into the buildings. At the, his first elementary school, the handicap, uh, doors did not work. He had to go through the, the trash route through the, uh. Through the, uh, cafeteria. So, I think.
Thank you, thank you. Alright, um, question eight. Uh, please discuss your understanding and opinion of comprehensive sexuality education. Uh, Ms. Higgins.
Um, my understanding is that. There. I, I guess I'm a little stumped on this, I comprehensive sexuality, but, um. I think that there's just, uh, some sex ed curriculum that is available, uh, in the school, but I believe it is all age-appropriate. I think that some people have been scared of, um. Sexual, sexual education because they label that at various levels, but. A lot of these kids need to be informed of what consent, not to consent to sexual acts, but, uh, we, I think that that's what is more told, like. When, when someone asks to give you a hug, you can say no and things like that. That's more age-appropriate. And I think that as we do age-appropriate things, that, that is okay.
Alright, uh, Mr. Villers.
So I'm not, I'm not familiar that the district, uh, has, uh, that actual curriculum. I know that we, that the district in the past has, uh, obviously sex, sex, uh, curriculum, sexual curriculum that we work with, uh. Um, parent, we actually bring that curriculum out at the district office and people can come and talk and look at it and, uh, see what it actually is. And I again encourage, as we've talked about several times here, about having the community do look at that and, and get that information. Um, other than that, I, I think that, um, I, we're not going, I don't believe in my experience in the school district that. Um, any, any particular teacher, schools are going rogue, teaching things that are in, that are not inappropriate. If they are, then we need to, to, to make sure that that, uh, doesn't, doesn't happen. Um, but it is the curriculum that we have that, that's been vetted. And, uh, I think people think that there is things that we're doing when we really aren't, because the rest of the world may have had an opportunity with that. So, thank you.
Alright, uh, Ms. Edwards.
Yes, I have parents that have told me that the curriculum is not always age-appropriate. And I feel like they've gone beyond what they need to teach. And they've started some things at too early of an age. Um, I think kids should be innocent as long as possible. Uh, my kids, you know, we, we had the conversation with our children. Of what good touch and bad touch is, what's appropriate, what isn't appropriate. And really just kept up on that until they were in fifth grade where there was a basic sex education. And a little bit more information in sex. I, the curriculum for the elementary, I think, is, um. An overreach and I think parents have more of a say in what happens at those early ages. Than what the school district has, has taken on.
Uh, Mr. Goddard.
I agree with Rhonda in the, uh, sense that I think some of our curriculum may have gone too far. I do absolutely support the district in what we allow the parents to opt out of. Uh, my wife and I have definitely, uh. Used that option to opt out. Uh, I think it is, it should be up to the parents to determine what's right for the kids, but I think. That some of the materials, because my wife has, uh, has gone to the district office and has reviewed some of the, uh, curriculum and. She has felt that some of it's inappropriate and I absolutely trust her, uh, her judgment on that. So, I, I agree that we should let the parents have the ultimate say and we should definitely keep our opt-out, uh, options.
Alright, and, uh, Mr. Burke.
Uh, yes, uh, most of the students have cell phones with cameras. And I don't think that any rogue teacher would have any expectation of privacy. Uh, if they want to go off the rails and teach something that's inappropriate in the classroom. Uh, we are mandated by the state in what we teach. We studied various curriculum and selected the most conservative. Of, of the options for our district. And the, the district is, is very open. Parents and others can, can view the, view the material and the curriculum. I was surprised when I went to a, uh, high school, uh, musical review. Uh, in the hall was the poster that said, "No Means No." But they were singing the song from Oklahoma, "I'm Just A Girl Who Can't Say No." And, and I was, I was shocked that they would have that, that song, you know, being performed. When there's a poster down the hall saying the opposite.
Right, uh, question nine. Uh, please tell us what was great about your own education and what could have been better? Mr. Villers.
Well, my own education, uh, was, uh, was, was great. I think that, uh, I came from a community that, uh, that was pretty tight and knit, but very diverse. And I was able to learn from the diversity that within that time and the different diverse teachers that I had and. And, and was able to get a, a good round cultural experience. Um, and I think, um, I, I think what could have been better, uh, in the time that I, uh, was going to school would have been that we, we'd spent more time. Um, in franchising kids in terms of inclusion with, uh, special needs and. Um, having those kids involved with us instead of segregating them at the time that, that was happened so often when I was in school. And so I think we would learn from those, uh, groups of kids that, and, and know that, and I think we've done a better job at that now in today's, uh. You know, world. And so, um. Thanks, thanks. That's my answer.
Right, uh, Ms. Edwards.
I enjoyed my school years. Uh, it was very fun. I had great teachers. There's a few that really stand out. Um, probably my ultimate most favorite teacher was Denny Bond. He, um, really helped me become an avid reader, which, you know, opens the world to you when you can read well. So I always felt like he was my biggest cheerleader and so I really liked him a lot. I was the first class to go through Cedar Heights and that was a lot of fun going into a brand-new school. Um, and my high school years were good. Uh, but I did take college classes at night and transferred all my credit so that I could graduate early because I had a job waiting for me. And I did work after school, so, um, I enjoyed it, but I didn't really, um. I wasn't real involved with it because I was working every day after school.
Alright, uh, Mr. Goddard.
I feel that I had a great education, uh. There were some definite drawbacks. Uh, when I went to, uh, school, my district paid for. Any, uh, high school student that wished to go to a community college, because we had a community college in my, uh, in my town, that, that district would pay for entirely. The, the cost of everything, including school books. So that helped a lot. So I took college classes while I was in high school. Uh, some drawbacks that I had growing up. There was too much emphasis on spending money on frivolous technology that, that weren't beneficial. And, uh, we also, my district, uh, spent way too much money on sporting events. I had a chemistry book that was, one of my teachers had and it was, it was over fifteen years old, yet we spent. Millions of dollars on a new football stadium.
Uh, let's see, and, uh, um, Mr. Burke.
Uh, yes, well, I attended school over a half a century ago, so my experience is somewhat dated. I remember teachers who made a difference in my life. And I think that was important. Uh, we have a lot of, most of the voters in the district don't have children in the schools. We have a lot of retired folks. I received a, a public education at taxpayer expense. And if I live long enough. I will be able to pay for that in taxes. So I, I don't, I don't have any problem, you know, paying school taxes. I think when I was in school, there were not the. Opportunities for individual students to excel. There was not, there was not help for those who were falling behind. There wasn't as much help for those who could excel. Uh, we have much more of that today and I appreciate it.
Right, uh, Ms. Higgins.
Uh, yeah, I came from a community where, um, both sports and the arts were supported widely by the community. And I felt like we were really well-supported and it was a really strong community. Everybody came out for the, um. The fall, uh, it was their fundraiser event that was put on by all of the kids. It was kind of like a talent show, but on steroids and it was amazing. And it was really great to be a part of that and. Um, I always felt supported by my teachers and I really hope that we can bring that to South Kitsap. Because I think that we have had this kind of rhetoric of like, South Kitsap doesn't care. We're not putting enough effort into our schools and people are, with kids are leaving. And I'm getting involved because I want to stay and make this a better place. And I think that we can make that. I think that if we change our attitudes and create that positive, um. Uh, feeling and ideas, we can all come and support our schools, uh, better and create that environment for our kids.
Alright, here is the last question, folks. Uh, why should we vote for you? And we'll start with Ms. Edwards.
I think you should vote for me because I stand for fiscal responsibility. Um, being a business owner for all these many years, uh, through many markets up and down, I know how to balance a budget. And I know how to keep us in, um, out of the red. I think that you should vote for me because I stand for parental rights. I don't think your parental rights, uh, they shouldn't stop at the door of the school. So I am definitely for parental rights and parental involvement. Um, I would very much like to see improvements in our academic performance. I feel that, you know, right now we are currently paying, um. Our teachers earn our top ten percent in the nation, highest-paid teachers. And yet, our test scores are in the bottom third. I would like to see that change. And I would like to have a program where every third-grade reader can read at third-grade level at the end of the year.
Mr. Goddard.
Thank you for this opportunity to, uh, present myself. Uh, I, along with Rhonda, agree that parental rights is a, is a strong point. And that's where a lot of parents that I have talked to have issues. And that's not all board members, but, uh, and. I actually agree with John on a lot of things. Um, actually haven't found too much I disagree with them on. So, um, I just, I want to be a new, uh, a, uh. A younger face, not no disparaging about age. Uh, but, uh, I. I, I want to impart the, uh, desires of my neighbors onto the board. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Burke.
Yeah, I want to apologize for the poor quality of my, my face or my picture. Uh, I'm in the, I'm in the car. I'm, I'm headed to the airport. I've got a convention in, uh, in Florida that I'm. Leaving on a flight of the parliamentarian at a big convention. So, oh, there, that looks better. I put my paper up. Now I can't read the paper. Okay, regarding parental rights, uh. There's been a lot of discussion at school boards recently. There's also an initiative, uh, that has been circulating regarding parental rights. And I've taken a portion from the last of that and I plan on introducing that as a policy change. Uh, for the district, uh, at its meeting next month. And that is basically that the parent guardian has a right to any record regarding their student. Unless there's a pending, uh, CPS investigation.
Hey, uh, Ms. Higgins.
Hi, yes, I think that, um. I would bring a different perspective than is currently on the board. Uh, like I said, I have, I have young kids and I am deeply invested in this, uh, community. I want the schools to succeed because I want them for my kids, but also for the kids that I met when I was tutoring my classes. I really enjoyed working with those kids. I didn't see any of them, even the ones that like to goof off, uh, and. They, I care about all of them. And I really, I could see that they all had different. Hard things that they were dealing with at home. And I think that, uh, we need to keep that in mind, that these kids are not just statistics. Um, they're real people and they're dealing with real things in their lives. And I am a compassionate and calm, critical thinker and I try to. Consider everybody's perspective before I make decisions. And I think that I can, uh, do a good job of representing, um. The South Kitsap parents and their views on the board.
And Mr. Villers.
Yeah, I, I, I think you, I, I believe that you should vote for me because I have my experience that I've had in the school district. But not just as the, i- is an educator in the school district. I've been involved in the community, uh, Rotary Club, uh, know people there. I've been involved with the Kiwanis Club. But one of the biggest involvements of mine in the community was that I was a parent. I raised three kids through this, through this, uh, school district. And I know what the difference is between both sides of the issues from parental rights to what my neighbors are saying. And what, what, and what the educators are saying at the same time. And I think I've experienced that, uh, for, uh, twenty-five or plus years. I know that when I first came to this community, I thought that my youngest son would be at the new high school. And, uh, he's not, as he, because he's thirty years old and he's, uh, he's gone. Uh, but he still supports the community. So, anyway, that's, I, I think I can, I am a person with good common sense and good judgment. And I could make some difference in this district.
Right, and, and now we come to the time for a closing statement. And you'll have one and a half minutes and we will start with Mr. Goddard.
Again, thank you for the opportunity to, uh, you provide this platform for us to introduce ourselves and that's actually been beneficial for me because I. I actually, uh, like to hear from the other candidates because, uh, for the most part, I don't think we disagree on any real issues. So I, I think that every candidate here is probably a good choice. And it's just everyone's got to make up their decision on what they, what they value most important. I, uh, along with the other people have stated, I've received several. I, along with the other people have stated, I've received several phone calls and emails from community members and I've responded to everyone that I've gotten. And I encourage people to continue to ask questions. I have actually, when people were asking me, I sent them links to, to, to this. And I know Jay, I, he did the same thing. And I, I encourage everyone to actually do your research. I'm not going to say right now, vote for me. I encourage everyone to do their research, ask the questions. And don't just vote because you like what someone said. Do more research on each individual. And that includes myself. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Berg.
Yes, I, I applaud the League of Women Voters for putting on this community forum. Unfortunately, many voters don't have any more information than what's in the voter's pamphlet. And that can lead to some serious voter remorse. I, I've maintained, for the past two years, I've maintained a website chronicling my work on the board. That's founded skschools.info. I'll repeat that, skschools.info. And there you can read about my work, what I've been doing, what other board members have been doing, my position on various issues and the controversy that's been going on. The school board should represent the owners of the schools. That's the community and the parents. If you have, I've looked at the, at the current composition of the board and various possibilities with three positions up for election this November. And you know, what will the board look like, you know, come next December? And if you had a board consisting primarily of professional educators, I think the parents would not have the oversight that they need. On the other hand, if you board, had a board composed of only complainers who do nothing but, but complain and, and say, no, 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 then the board's not going to be able to get anything done. So, yeah, study the candidates, make wise decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Higgins.
Yeah, I wanted to introduce a little bit more about myself so that you have more of an idea of what you're getting. I worked for Seattle Children's for a number of years and I worked with families as they were leaving the hospital and I worked to talk with them about their experience there. And they were good experiences and there were bad experiences and I was able to calmly and address those issues. And I think as a school board member, mostly we just deal with angry people. I think, you know, I think it's, people come when there's a problem and that's, that's okay. They should. And I think that that's what we need to address and be calm and make sure that people are being heard and that we are able to direct them to the answers that they're looking for and help come up with solutions together. And I am someone that can help make that happen. I can work with lots of different people and listen and be calm and helpful. And I, like I said before, I'm very invested for the sake of my kids and kids that I have met. And I believe that we can do better as a community as we get involved. And I'm glad that there are a lot of people running because that shows that there's a lot of interest and in the school board. And that I think is a big change. And I think that that means that good things are coming for our community.
Right, Mr. Villers.
Again, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters because, for having these types of opportunities. And I think it really helps the whole, our whole system, our democratic system. And I think that brings me to the point that we really need the community to be involved. And I'm passionate about having, being a partner with the community. I think that oftentimes it's knowledge that we have, if we, if we don't know an answer, we make it up in our head. We just naturally do that. If we don't know something, we oftentimes will think that we, we have all kinds of scenarios. And so I think if we seek to understand that and we can work together, we can make our community better. And we can have less controversy with, with, with each other in that time. So I am excited to be part of this process. I would agree with Mr. Goddard in terms of really get out there and understand and know the people that, and seek to understand that to, to see how each, what, what, what people are made of. I think it's a good group of folks here. And I'd be happy to serve with any of them. So thank you very much.
And Ms. Edwards.
Yes, I think a vote for me is a vote for kids. Most of the people that is on the board, as, as it is right now, are people that are in within the school district or they're married to someone in the school district or they have kids that are working as teachers in the school district. And I think it's a very small little circle that they don't always see what the bigger picture is. So having people on the board that have business experience, have no conflict of interest in trying to negotiate with the unions, you actually can actually, you know, advocate for the kids. And so I would like to see more people, more diverse people on the group rather than just retired principals and, and school teachers. I would also like to see much more transparency. One of the things that I've seen, and, and there was a big article in the newspaper about the fact that there are so many FOIA requests to the district trying to get information. That's because the information is not readily given. And the only way you can get that information is to file a FOIA request. So I would like more transparency. And, and of course, I want very, very strong academics. And I think I'm out of time because I saw you kind of wave. So thank you for hosting this. I really appreciate the opportunity to listen to all the views and, and kind of meet everybody here on the panel. So thank you.
Candidates, thank you for taking the time to join us this evening. A well-informed electorate is critical to our democracy. Events such as, as this forum are one way to achieve that, that goal. Voters, hopefully this forum has helped you choose your candidates. Ballots for the August first primary election have been mailed. I got mine yesterday. So keep an eye out for yours. The League is encouraging voters to vote early and return the ballots as soon as possible, preferably to one of Kitsap County's twenty five ballot drop boxes. Their locations can be found on the Kitsap Auditor's website. Four Kitsap County School Board candidate forums held this week have been recorded. And links to those videos will soon be on our website at l w v dash kitsap dot org. BCAT's recordings of the forums will be available by clicking on BCAT Shows on YouTube on the City of Bremerton BCAT website. And at a future time on Comcast Channel Twelve and the Stown Wave Channel Three. Please encourage others to view the forums and vote. Thank you for attending and good night.